I myself migrated to Memphis and that's why I live and I got my own nonprofit.
First, can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
To make sure my voice is being heard. The way we streamlined and networked our situation in that particular area wasn't through satellites. Internet was a part of our, is a part of our situation, but the best way to do it is called conversing. You can have volunteers, they don't even have to leave their home. They could be set up from seven to like twelve and if they're a part of that particular zip code that you're trying to gain sponsorship from, or if they're a part of the volunteer network in any way, like the internet network or whatever, it would, the phone call would streamline straight to their house. Okay, so all they have to do is pick up the phone and it's like connected to their computer. So any, anything that they have to collect or say or whatever can be done straight from their home. Okay, they do it through insurance collection and all types, it's just an internet conference, phone conversation. I've heard a lot, this is my first, I guess it's a town hall meeting, first town hall meeting, I'm not too sure how many you have, I'm not too sure if you have them in all five boroughs, if you just, you know, do it here. But I'm excited at the fact that this many people will come out for something as positive as this. But you have to also understand, no matter how positive it is, you're gonna have some negativity within the group. So you have to look over that, see it as an obstacle, not something that stops you, but something that you just hurdle and overcome. Okay, so I see there board members here, individuals that were married to influential individuals that were a part of the radio station, those individuals that picked up the torch and carried it on. Okay, so look past some of the, what am I calling ignorance in the crowd, okay, and just look at how you're progressing. Listen to the answers that are being given, some of the problems that are being solved and move on with that. Take, note that, take that home.
Pacifica and all the five stations have so much infighting, so much faction that while Bob, Ray, they can tell you that I complain about it with the National Board, that's not what I'm trying to say. It's a relief to hear someone on the local station board saying what I actually thought was from beginning to end, the truth. Now, I'm not here, so I don't know, I don't know, so don't take my word as verification of what she said, but from my membership on the National Board, I found so much partisanship that a lot of times I'm saying something, trying to make a point, and I'm overlooking something that the opposition has made, but they're right, and I'm overlooking it because I'm determined to win on the point. But I wanted to say one more thing, but my real thing was to talk about financial business. His name is, your name is Moorester?
Monroe.
Monroe, Monroe. When you asked Rudy about how long it took to get the financial information, that's a very good, very, very good question. I, I hope that everybody believes that's a very good question. I appreciate Rudy's remark because I'm gonna tell you something, I don't know what's happening in New York, I'm curious, but I don't know, but I can say this as a National Board member. The National, the National staff that deals with financing, the paid staff, they give the National Board whatever financial information they want to give us. They don't give us all the financial information, we don't fire them, we don't threaten to fire them, we don't demote them, we don't suspend them without pay, they run us, even though we have the authority at the National Board, we don't run them. At WPFW, the general manager and the financial officer there, they give us what little bit of financial information they want to give us. I just learned this week what bank WPFW puts money, I couldn't get that at the local station, I couldn't even get that at the national station. Finally, the chief financial officer of all of Pacifica, the phone call was made as we were preparing for the orientation that will be at the National Board, and we can hear this from out of Jersey. When we were talking about the orientation, I pressed him about some of the points that I hoped that he would talk about in the orientation, and I asked him specifically, what bank does WPFW use? I asked him a few times, he finally told me SunTrust Bank. I don't know what the big deal about that is, but I'm just telling you. Rudy, if he's the treasurer, that is the volunteer, the person on the board or working for the board during the financial reporting and record keeping, and if he's not the paid financial officer, whether you call him business, that person, woman or man, business manager, treasurer, or whatever, if he's not that, he doesn't have control over that information. The general manager has it, that person with the financial management has it, perhaps, perhaps the program director, perhaps, I don't know, I don't know. But paid staff have it, and if the board has it, it's because they've come together with such effectiveness, they've let it be known that the general manager's gonna get fired if they don't get the information. I doubt if they're doing that. Now, I said that just to cover for this young man whom I just met today, and I don't know if he's good or bad, but I'm impressed. Now, my point that I wanted to stand up about is, just as Rudy says that we have at WBI very, very heavy costs with rent and the tower room, and also you said that other thing, transfer, and also, is that distinct from utilities?
Yeah.
Because utilities here are also very, very high too, higher than everybody else. Not only is that the catch of WBI and poisoning the financial viability of the stations, but there's another matter that's affecting practically every other station, and that is the cost of premiums, similarly the cost of websites. You have a very good website, so perhaps since WBI has an excellent website, the cost of its website are justifiable. At WPFW, we got a piece of trash for a website, a total piece of trash. I'm gonna get off. So we can't really justify it. Look at your cost for premiums. What I want to suggest to all of you is something I'm gonna suggest if I get a chance at our board meeting, National Board meeting this week. We need to cut our premium costs by at least a half, and I would suggest rather than us giving gifts to people who give us money, we give them excellent programming, and for everybody who calls in during the players' drives, whether they give money or not, we give them one chance to win a prize. For everybody who donate money, for every twenty-five dollars they give, we give an additional chance to win a prize. So let's say I just call in and give my name and all the information that the station wants from me, I get, I get a chance to win a prize, it's put in the drawing, I didn't give anyone. If I give a hundred dollars in all that information, I get five chances to win a prize. Twenty-five dollars for, one hundred dollars for four, which is twenty-five dollars that I gave, plus my information. And then instead of giving something because I gave a hundred dollars during a particular show, I get to give back, it's costing, at least at WPFW it's gonna cost almost two-hundred dollars a year, and probably at WPBAI about the same amount if not more. I suggest get forty, max, and give that as a prize. Get twenty mats and ten iPads and give that as a prize, or get a car, one car, one car for a whole year. Now, I'm not, and what I'm trying to say is, you could get a luxury car, it would be far less, and I don't mean by, you get a forty thousand dollar car or truck, that would be far less than what we're paying for, yes, yes to me, that would be far less than what we're putting out in the way of cost for premiums, and that might be a savings on the employment cost that y'all try to cut. So I just wanted to suggest that. I don't know how it's gonna be received, our National Board here, just wanted to put it out.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Kenny Simmons, and I'm an avid listener to WBI for years. I see Bernard Whitehead back and some of my other friends over here. You know, from a listener's point of view, every time the premium time comes around, I'm always struggling with some economic situation of my own. I have five children and four grandchildren, so I'm sure you know what I'm talking about. But there's no excuse, so I've been motivated to come up with ideas that I hope would help me generate income so that I can help support WBI. And I, fortunately, I've been able to do that. But I'm sitting here thinking, I'm saying, hmm, should I share this? Because I don't want it to come across as though I'm feathering my own nest, because I don't have that intention. I'm already very well on my way with what I intend to do with my idea, but I'm gonna share it with you just the same. But before I do that, the one thing, and Monroe, I say this to you specifically with the utmost respect, I want you to know that. And he's probably saying, yeah, oh, let me brace myself, no, but seriously, the energy, the enthusiasm, the chutzpah, I guess you could call it, for one of another, which I'm sure everybody here understands what I'm, what I'm trying to describe, that we, that we identify in Monroe and his way of getting his point across and making sure that he is heard, I think is a good example of what we, and not being divisive, but as people of color, need to do, that same energy. When we want to address our concerns, we should have that same kind of energy and that same kind of determination to be heard, to get our point across, because I don't think we would be struggling like we are in many instances of our lives. And I said that because I stood in, I said, you know, this guy, he's definitely not going to be shut down, he refuses.
Yeah, but Dr. Martin Luther King, he's your people too.
Absolute.
Malcolm X.
Absolute. And I'm not, I don't want to get too started, but I already won, I already won. But you know what that did for me as I sat here? It made me say to myself, that's the kind of energy I need to keep, that fire in me about those issues that concern people that look like me, a person of color in this town and in this country, because you know, as all of us know, we listen to WBI very well, there are many, many issues that we have to contend with on a day-to-day basis that we're not addressing as effectively as we could. So now that brings me to, I called in one time to WBI with an idea about, you know, for fundraising purposes, why not set up a bookstore? A bookstore, and several bookstores, if it's, if it's possible, I mean, you know, there are many authors that provide books for the premiums, et cetera, et cetera, maybe there's such a thing as a collection of authors donating or providing some literature, some books on consignment, and we can, I don't know how possible it is, I'm just saying, that's an idea. Get some locations, some little storefronts in some of these areas, we can probably get storefronts pretty reasonably, and then just keep an ongoing, an ongoing bookstore open that's a venue for new books that writers are, you know, come out with, and we can just, you know, and all year long, we can be generating income from these bookstores. Drift shops, I thought of as an option, you know, just getting people to donate clothing, open up storefronts and set these, this clothing up, and, and, you know, and provide it at a reasonable cost, because some drift shops now, believe it or not, they're, they're competing with some, some department stores in prices. Okay, and in the interest of time, my, my personal, because I don't like just talking, we do a lot of talking, and in the interest of time, I coined a phrase, I'm a scoutmaster in the Bronx, I came here from the Bronx, and my troop and pack and I together, we've coined a phrase, support writers, read in your neighborhood. And you know, like some people say, kill two birds with one stone, I'm not killing any, but to hit more than one target with one stone, the support writers part is for all the people who write books and plays and other things, and of course, the read part is an encouragement for us to read more to our children, have our children read more to us, and of course, visit senior citizen centers and read to them there, visit people in the hospital and read to them there, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And I, I, you know, I, my time is up. Thank you very much for listening.
Anybody have a question on finance? Okay. I believe this would come on to finance, my name is Bernard. I would feel that increasing membership is a way of raising revenue. Some years ago, I mentioned to someone at WBI, the possibility of passing out something that we could give to people who need, and at that time, we had some little cards that were given out there. Now, I recognize that this would be an expense, something like, this is an expense on WBI. What I'm suggesting, because we all meet people, when I meet, when I go to the doctor, I'm sitting on the bus, anywhere I go, I mention WBI. I went to someone at the bank the other day, they'll take out something, they'll write down the number. We need to, and particularly among young people, I mean, many of our elderly people too, because at my age, I go to the doctor's offices, meeting elderly people, many of them I'll say, what, he watches on TV, some will come up and they'll, and I'll say, why don't you turn on the radio? Some of them don't even have a radio, I convinced people to buy a little radio. My point is that to lessen the expense, if WBI, and what is the problem with folio in terms of this expense for that, but even if it's a flyer that you send to us that we can make copies of, I carry them in my bags, and on the back of it has something of the program, that's not to be every program, but something that would be enticing to the elderly, particularly in the health programs, because they're always telling people about various supplements and so on and so forth, and people listen to. So these are the things that would stimulate people, some people like in Politech, where people listen to for years, and so, oh, you can catch them on this program and so on. So I'm suggesting that possibly a flyer can be sent out with some publicity on the back, and you can send it out three or four times a year, send it out with a premium, and encourage people, please make copies, please give this out, and tell them where, where, if you go to a gathering, if you go to a meeting, those of us who live in buildings, we can put them out on our, so that all our neighbors will get them, co-ops condos and so on, projects, wherever you live, encourage people, so we need to increase the listenership, because even this twenty-five dollars a ton can afford, and they send it in, it will be a help.
Thank you.
I feel we need a group for the membership outreach and fundraising committee, see around here, when you start saying good stuff like that, there's always a committee for you. Just, just a few things, it's now four.
Twenty-two, twenty-five.
Okay, it's four thirty-five, we have to be out of here at five. This.
Four forty-two.
Four forty-two? Okay, so raise our timekeeper. In other words, we're slowly running out of time, there's someone here that wanted to ask for, yeah, I'll give you a second. But just a few housekeeping things, you know this is WBI, and it wouldn't be WBI if we didn't do what?
Plan.
There you go. So before you leave, we're asking, whatever you can afford, if it's at all possible, to give it to our chair, Ife, she's back here, so I can't see her, whatever you can afford, if there's nothing, that's fine, we're very happy to see all of you here. I just want to tell you about a few things that are coming up. On Monday, January fourteenth, at the Martin Luther King Labor Center, the old eleven ninety-nine as we call it, that's our local station board meeting, a lot of people want to get information, that is the place to go to. You will see all of us as board members, you will see those of us who walk the walk, those of us who talk the talk, or those of us who walk one way and we talk another way. That's, that's where you see all of that, so you'll get to know exactly who we are and who you're dealing with. It's going to be at eleven ninety-nine, three ten West Fourth Third Street between Eighth and Ninth Avenues, in the cafeteria. The in-person Pacifica National Board meeting is going to be January twenty-fifth through the twenty-seventh in Newark, New Jersey, at the Gateway Hilton, January twenty-fifth through the twenty-seventh. And it's also good, if everybody here were to come out, that would be great, so I'm encouraging you to come out.
Do you have the address?
I don't remember it, but it should be posted on the website, and there will be a card at, hotline number for the WBI local station board is two one two.
Five nine one.
Two zero nine, two nine one nine. Again, it's two one two, two zero nine, two nine one nine. Also, on Tuesday, January fifteenth, it is whose birthday?
Martin Luther King.
Martin Luther King, we're gonna have another?
Hundred.
There you go, okay? So we're asking all of you here throughout the entire, how many hours, Bernard? It's back, I can't see.
Six to eleven.
Okay, to come out and support, take calls. I'm in the tower room a lot, and we do miss a lot of calls, so you know, I know somebody talked about, has some good ideas here, which Camilla will summarize for us, volunteers, remote, remote.
Flagline.
Okay, we haven't, we won't be able to do that between now and Tuesday, so we're relying on you to come out, to one twenty Wall Street, tenth floor. Now, somebody mentioned about getting up to the station, that is a problem, you need to know who you are and what you look like. It is the building room that, that we're in owned by Silver Steed, everybody knows who Silver Steed is. Also, January twenty-first, which is when the, the, Dr. King's birthday will be observed, there will also be another fundraiser, so we're asking all of you to come out and support us. Let's see, in term, am I missing anything?
The election's four days for.
Okay, the election's four days, it's January twenty-fourth that I haven't done.
Sixty Center Street, it'll be on the hotline.
Okay, Sixty Center Street, and you know, come out, let your voices be heard, because you know you want your ballots counted. Um, what else do you, is everybody in here a member?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. But remember, you have to become a member every year, because you were a member in two thousand six, doesn't mean that you're a member in two thousand, it's an annual membership, so you need to renew your membership every year in order to be able to vote, so please keep that in mind, and tell your friends that also. So I will, any other housekeeping thing that we need to do? Okay, I see, who's on with that?
Eva.
That's our chair, okay, Eva. Lovely.
How do you become a member of WBI?
How do you become a member? You may volunteer three hours in the tower room, become a member, or you can pledge twenty-five dollars.
Per year. Per year.
Yeah, twenty-five dollars per year, so during the fund drive, you make your pledge, now if you pledge, you have to pay, you have to be a paid member, or you could get a waiver if you cannot afford it. I know there are people who cannot afford the twenty-five dollars, so those are the ways to become a member. Yes, maybe like.
I wanted to say something that you were talking about how to get more money to the station.
Yeah.
Well, I'm listening to the station for twenty-five years, okay, and I'm also a member, and what I'd like to say is that it's so simple, like the folio which we don't have anymore, in the folio, they used to have, when you opened, you opened and there was the whole program on two pages, only that, only that, the program, you, that's what you have to copy and everybody makes a copy and give it to everybody else, that's simple, it doesn't cost anything.
Yeah.
And what I am doing, I'm, I have the last copy which I had was about five years ago, and I'm still copying that and giving that to people.
Right.
I mean, that doesn't cost anything to copy a program, the program guide, you know, it was up in the middle of the folio, this doesn't cost anything.
You're absolutely right, and our folio editor is Bob Lettering.
Ex, ex.
Ex, ex, I have to say to give Bob the credit.
Former, I say.
Ex, former, used to be, whatever you like.
And everybody can do this, everybody can do it.
Right, he was an ex, but now in the finance committee, there's a budget line for folio. Now, the current interim general manager that we have did not produce two folios per year, that was not done, so that's the truth, so that you know.
But we don't need the whole folio, only the whole program, whatever the program presents, when it is out and you talk with them, get it out.
That's an excellent suggestion, thank you very much, and speaking of suggestions, before I get to Camilla, I see an arm up there, yes?
If I wanted to become a member right now, do you have a packet I can, a membership form I can pull up?
I don't have anything, I don't have it right now, what I do have here, did anybody sign the list?
This is a four.
Okay, Tiffany has a four, okay.
I have a lot of.
So that sounds like Mike Beasley's voice, so, so I'm gonna take your twenty-five dollars. They could take twenty-five. Okay, I have, and the judge, would you like to say something, Judge?
Well, I guess.
You're a shy judge, never finish a sentence.
I had a question, and I was going to ask a question, but I think it's too long a discussion. I do want to say that I listen religiously to WBI, I have been doing that since the seventies, it makes my day very, very many days, notwithstanding the problems that I know I dare, I would like to take my hat off, you see, I have one, if I had one, to the people who are struggling to, on a day-to-day basis, in that work, in that station, to try and keep it together, because while it's hard for me to listen to, I'm not living the struggle, and I'd just like to give kudos to those of you who work every day to make sure that I get my, oh, drug of choice in the morning, wake up home.
Okay, Bernard, another one to add to, relative to our drug of choice, WBI, I'll ask what the acronym stands for for the drug, you're gonna have to work it out with the judge, I'm not gonna say that. Anybody just wanted to ask a question, any comments? How about the side of, did anybody sign? Okay, starting around, this is our secretary's cat, we ran out of slides. Anybody else?
I want this.
Yeah, it's gonna, Ray?
Oh, so just wanted to add a hand.
Yeah, pass, pass it over. Up here, up here.
Maybe Bernard could tell us when Errol Maitland will come back? When Debra Fernandez's voice will be heard again?
Monroe, Monroe.
I don't, listen, you're not the big expert, Serene.
Respect and response is coming out.
Cut it out, will you? We got promised that Errol Maitland will be back in October.
Okay, before everybody, before.
I don't like lies and deceit.
Does anybody just have something that they want to say?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, sir. Okay, let's just, let's not leave it, it's gonna be five o'clock.
Come on, I mean, we're told he'd be back in, in October.
One second, one second, one second, stop. He has the floor and he deserves the respect, that's the Pacifica way, so just listen to what he has to say, thank you.
I have a finance question about income generation.
Use the mic, yeah, use the mic.
I have a finance question about income generation and whether or not there are lines in the budget for certain things. What is whether or not there's an option, if it's against within the bylaws, to use the website as an income generation engine by forming strategic partnerships, having ads on it, that sort of thing, or that's out of the boundaries of what would be appropriate in terms of having strategic partnerships, having click-throughs with ads, being a part of affiliate programs, and if that is or is not an option, I'd like some feedback on that, but also I'm wondering if there are places in the budget, might I, in the budget, for audience development or new program development, for those things that are on a super vulnerable business.
Okay, thank, thank you for your question.
We're in our treasury.
Bob will answer, who have a minute?
Well, your first question is a very, a very important option for us to look at, actually, unpaid staff union, we have a union for those of us who do that work, and we were brainstorming when the crisis, you know, the financial problems hit a few months ago, and that was one of the ideas we actually came up with. The bylaws do not forbid necessarily off-air advertising. The folio, those of you who are longtime members may recall, the folio used to have ads by small businesses, so I think we have to look very carefully at standards to make sure that we're not promoting unethical businesses or ripoff businesses, but I think that's well worth looking into, especially with the internet, there's so many ways to do that. Second question, again, was.
Online or just more audience development or?
Yeah, well, there is, one of the things that we did on this board is this year, is that we greatly increased the budget for advertising, management, I think two thousand dollars, and we felt that was really inadequate, and that there's a lot of potential with publications in diverse communities that could reach out to do, as sister here was saying, develop new members, new listeners and new members, and so that's something we're gonna work on, again, with the new permanent manager that we're very much looking forward to having very, very soon, next to the intense work of our screening committee to find a new manager.
Okay, before everybody leaves, I'd just like, we have a very shy board member who is, who works. who works very hard, she's probably gonna kill me now, and her name is Serene Roberts, I see her hiding behind...
She's not that shy.
And, um...
She's banned!
She's, uh, she's, she's hiding behind somebody, I don't know who it is, but she's hiding behind somebody. So, Serene, I, but before I go to Camilla, she's also a member of the Membership Outreach and Fundraising Committee, I see your white, your poofy, that's how I know who's back there. Serene, any, any last minute things you'd like to have to say?
I just want to urge you all to pay close attention, to remind you there's a difference between what people say and what people do. So, when you have these public meetings, whether it's the community, which we insist on taking to other parts, we don't, we don't think everything begins and ends in midtown. Um, so, we know, we will be around the area, whether, you know, you're down in Cleveland, you're down in Jersey, and everything, but you should come out to the committee, and then what, one of these committees, if you weren't, they always become members, because if you come to a committee meeting, our average meeting is about three hours, right? That's your three hours' membership. So, whether you're finance committee, because you have some expertise in that, or members of Outreach and Fundraising, because you have a flyer thing in your bag, it's heavy, because you always got something to give out, whatever it is, um, you have a programming committee, and we have this committee of inclusion, which looks at diversity, we have, somebody help him, I guess it's, um...
The management evaluation.
We have the management evaluation committee. These are committees that are open to all listeners, and attendance at the meeting and participation at the meetings gives us new energy, gives us new ideas, gives you an opportunity to really get a feel for what's happening at the station, gives you a better sense of ownership than listening, because here you actually get to change things, to make suggestions, you know, come out and see who's who, what's what, bring what you have to offer to the table, get your membership. Um, I watch, I was watching, just a slight aside, I was watching NBC this morning, and they had Positively Black, which used to be a one-hour program, but with Sue Simmons, they now give us seven minutes, and then they say, what? Seven minutes! And then, that is their program, okay? So, we need BAI. BAI doesn't just belong to the African community, but it absolutely does belong to the African community. And you look at the rate of gentrification, like right over there, that building that's going really fast, you know that, you know you better pay close attention.
Okay, thanks. And before you go, I, I know you've made some minor contribution, I want this community to, we want to, to you, the contributions that you made also in terms of suggestions, that we on the Membership Outreach and Fundraising Committee, at our next meeting, which call hotline two one two two zero nine two nine one nine, or come to the board meeting, please come out to the board meeting, thank you.
Please come out to the board meeting.
Okay, then you'll see, you'll see, you'll see the board members in action. Just going to read out the contributions that you made today. So, Camilla, can you just, you can also thank, thank the committee for their suggestions while you're at.
Okay. Thank you all very much for coming and for participating in the following, and also mentioning that college was good, but BAI is better.
Oops, sorry.
I think somebody else said something about how, you know, she doesn't want any old source passed down to her, which was a very, very, very good point and very well put. Besides that, I don't know the detail, but the, the suggestions, the reasons that I took away from the discussion were, let me see, um, we talked about having other locations volunteers, whether it's through satellite location, or through, I think, something called condensing, and I guess the technology is different for those to, how to set those things up, but those are two ideas to explore. Um, let's see, what else? Somebody else suggested to, uh, excuse me, I guess it's hard to teach people how to download things from the internet, to get, you know, to be able to preserve the wonderful things that BAI puts forth on the station, excuse me, and, um, and also just to pay for getting information on the internet. I believe, um, we also had somebody suggesting to bring more young people, and, and involve more young people. And, uh, there was also discussion relating to not having enough computer access at home, or, uh, or the ability to use computers, so maybe to make more of an effort on the air to include, if possible, to include numbers that people can call, though there's a recognition that a lot of organizations, non-for-profits, et cetera, don't give out phone numbers anymore, that they do a lot of their business online. Um, and let's see, I think, I think there was also an idea in terms of fundraising from the, the man from Washington, suggesting that we give out prizes instead of giving out premiums to, for everyone who donates, and, um, setting up a bookstore or a thrift store to generate income. And, um, and then I think finally, somebody, and we, I think the mob committee definitely agrees with this, somebody suggested that we sort of increase the ability for people to pass out flyers or cards or whatever on their own, or somehow spreading the word of BAI that way.
Okay. Thank you very much. So, I think, I think I'd say, I was ready for one to three, how many three this time will be, I'm gonna say three, from below us, we're working at high school, three, you flash, if you're ready to break.
And after high, you're low, close.
Two. One. We go on the talent room, thank you so much, thanks a lot. Thank you for coming out.